Roll call, Ms. Zimba.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Kuzik.
Present.
Mr. Giovanni.
Here.
Mr. Gofredo.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
Present.
Mr. Lot.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Here.
Ms. Rinsky.
Here.
All present, Mr. Brown and Mr. Gofredo and Ms. Vargo Hefner are on the phone.
Motion to approve the minutes of May 19th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Curtsy to the floor, is there anyone that would like to address counsel? Please state your name and where you're from, sir.
My name is James Andrew Mahan, I'm from Mount Bethel.
Okay, you have five minutes, sir.
Excuse me, can you spell your last name?
M.A.H.A.N.
Thank you.
You have five minutes, sir.
Yes, sir, about five months ago, my guns were confiscated. My girlfriend and I had a little tiff, she was steered into a PFA, soon as she found out what it was, she dropped it. I should have gotten my guns back immediately. I got seven out of my eight guns back, with the exception of a very valuable vintage heirloom, Browning High Power 9mm, that I wanted to give to my son, and give to his son, and carry on through the family. It was unscratched, it was kept inside this bag for the last 46 years, I bought it 46 years ago. It was kept inside here, not a single scratch on it. The Sheriff's Department jerked me around for five months, telling me to do all kinds of silly things like go to motions court. They'd help me out in motions court, I went to motions court twice. And the characters here are one, the sheriff, who gave me the Jedi mind game, whatever, giving me non-answers and thinks that I'm not smart enough to know what he's doing. The sheriff himself, a lieutenant named Volpe, and a deputy named Devoe, or Devor. Those, at least those three, there's one other that I don't even know his name. But they jerked me around, and they jerked me around, and they jerked me around, and until the state police got involved. Now then, the reason they told me is because it wasn't registered, and they couldn't give it to me because it wasn't registered. Come to find out, they could have, and I told them a number of times, Devor, to go to E-Trace. And he said he didn't have E-Trace. I have been lied to so much by the Sheriff's Department, and by the county administrator or whatever executive, that it's just, it's absolutely criminal what's been happening. Now, what else is criminal is what they did to my family heirloom. They scratched it all up. And these, I want to give these to the counsel, may I?
Sure. Thank you.
Even though, even though the gun is priceless to me, it was worth about $1,200 to $1,500. Now, if I'd get 100 bucks for it, I'd be lucky. So, I want you folks to know about it, I understand there's some kind of term limit on the county executive that's coming up. I think, I can't think of a better reason than the way the sheriff, the lieutenant deputy, and the deputy treated me over the last five months than to have some action on this. Now then, I've been told to jump through yet another hoop, go down and fill out some more reports, and they'll just laugh at me all the more. And I guarantee you, they're laughing at me all the time. All I wanted was my gun back, that's what I got back. That's all I had to tell you, and thanks for listening.
Thank you. Do we have any way else for curtsy to the floor? Mr. McClure, would you like to give an executive report, please?
Good evening, how are you? The 2023 municipal primary election report. Final statistics for 2023 municipal primary election. 217,663 voters registered to vote in Northampton County. 95,798 of them are enrolled in the Democratic Party. 95,798 are enrolled in the Democratic Party. 79,932 are enrolled in the Republican Party, and the balance are enrolled in numerous other parties. In the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, you're another, even if you choose a particular name of a party. There were, in the 2023 municipal primary, there were 41,850 total votes cast. That works out to 24% turnout. 24,430 in-person voters, people who voted on Election Day. 17,354 absentee mail-in ballots, with a 74% return rate. 13,728 of those were Democratic, and 3,626 were Republican. Ballots issued, 23,486 total absentee mail-in ballots. 18,185 Democratic, and 5,301 Republican. The pre-canvas began at 7:00 AM on Election Day, and we were able to quickly complete all absentee and mail-in ballots by 1:30 PM. It took six hours. Now, that's excellent, and everyone involved in that process should be very proud of their effort, and we are grateful to them for that. But let's keep in mind that in the presidential election, there'll be four times the number of mail and absentee ballots to process. Unofficial Election Day results from the polls were all posted by 11:30 PM, with a slight lag in two polling districts returning USB sticks. Without this delay, we believe we could have posted the unofficial results by 10:00 PM, which would also be a very good result. There's no way we'll be able to do that in a presidential. That's just, you know, something we need to alert the public to be aware of. We'd like to thank all of our numerous outside volunteers, temporary employees, and internal county staff from O&amp;M, HR, Administration, Sheriff's Department, and the mailroom for their commitment on Election Day. While official certification is not due to the Department of State until June 5th, we were able to have our election results official, signed off, our official election results signed off by the Elections Commission, and posted to the county website on May 30th, 2023. Our primary election is over. Any questions?
Anybody got any questions? Thank you, sir.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Old business, does we have any old business to discuss?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Mc-
I have a question. I was going over this, and are we, is there going to be another committee meeting about the, and maybe one of the people on this, ethics? Because it has been rolling around, and I've talked to the solicitor, and he looked at my concern. I mean, I think it's been covered, so I see it's not on, and I just wondered, before the next meeting, are we going to discuss this again? I mean, I think we ought to either vote it up or down.
I think Ms. Vargo Hefner plans on having it in a governance committee meeting, I don't, you know, that's the latest I've heard.
Oh, well, I just wondered if it was gonna, is it gonna be before the next meeting?
Yes.
Oh, okay, well then, thank you, that's it.
Yes, mister.
On that note, that was tabled, correct?
No.
It was not tabled.
That was not tabled.
Okay, thank you.
That was not tabled. That was left for the solicitor to make a change? Am I correct on that? It was not tabled.
At the last meeting, there was an amendment by Mr. Heckman that was given to me. I made that change, it changed one paragraph, I added his concerns. And it's ready to go.
And Ms. Vargo Hefner, Lori, if you can hear me, I think at that point said she would discuss it at the next governance meeting, bring it up the following day. Lori, am I correct with that?
I thought so, I thought we just said, struck it, but I don't remember that we voted to table, but if we did, we'll bring it off the table, but I thought that we were gonna wait and introduce it the next time.
That was my opinion, it's going back to you. We good with that?
We're good.
Okay, any other old business?
Nope.
All right, let's move on to new business. New business, an ordinance, introduction of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending the 2023 Northampton County Budget Department of Fiscal Affairs Court Administration Department, Public Works Department, and Human Services. I need a sponsor.
Second.
And a second. This, we will have a public hearing and a debate and a vote, possibly on June 15th. We'll move on to the second one, introduction of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance providing for an amendment to Northampton County Home Rule Charter, Article 2, County Council, to provide term limits on members of County Council for the County of Northampton. I need a sponsor and a second.
I'll sponsor.
I'll second.
Who's second?
John Gofredo.
Okay, thank you. We will have a public hearing and debate on that on June 15th. Introduction of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance providing for an amendment for Northampton County Home Rule Charter, Article 3, County Exec Provide Limited, Limits on the Office of County Exec of the County of Northampton, I need a sponsor.
I'll sponsor.
I'll second. We will have a public hearing June 15th and debate for that. Introduction of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance providing for an amendment for Northampton County Home Rule Charter, Article 4, Controller to Provide Limits, Term Limits on the Controller of the County of Northampton, can I have a sponsor?
I'll sponsor that.
Second?
Not second, no, not second, I'm asking a question. If both of us are running for Controller, is that a conflict of interest for him to sponsor an ordinance that would be for basically a job you're running for? Because I was wondering if I could even vote on this, because there seems like there would be some interest in either limiting the terms or having a referendum that referred at all to the Controller in a race that you are running in.
That's a very good point, I will turn to our solicitor.
I need to take a look at that.
Mm-hmm.
Before I answer.
Okay, so can we table this for this?
Unless we get somebody else to sponsor.
Oh.
I'll sponsor.
I'll sponsor.
There we go.
I would like you to look at that-
Lori and John Phil Gofredo, yes.
The only thing is, in sponsoring this and moving this forward now, if two people can't vote on this, then it's seven council members voting on it.
Seven council members will decide.
And is there a-
I'll take a look at that and I'll give you an answer.
We'll have a decision discussion before our next council meeting. That work for both sides?
Sure does.
Okay, that works for me. All right, fifth one, consideration of a local share funds for Recovery Resolution. Ms. Rinsky, would you please introduce us a resolution, please?
Sure. Whereas the Pennsylvania Racehorse Development Gaming Act, Act 2004-71, as amended, has established the Pennsylvania Gaming Local Share Account, Local Share Account. Under the Commonwealth Financing Authority, CFA, for the purpose of distributing 2% of the gross terminal revenues of certain licensed gaming facilities in an orderly and timely fashion to support and enhance community and economic well-being and mitigate the impact of gaming and related activities. Whereas the Northampton County Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED, has prepared all the documentation necessary to submit a request for the funding on behalf of Recovery Revolution. Now therefore be it resolved, the Northampton County Council that it does hereby support the request for funding to CFA on behalf of Recovery Revolution, Inc., for the Client Space Expansion and Improvements Project at Recovery Revolution. 109 Broadway, Bangor, Northampton County, in the amount of $127,151 to both the Monroe County Local Share Account and the Northampton and Lehigh Counties Local Share Account. Be it further resolved that the county, that the Council of Northampton County does hereby designate the County Executive to execute all documents and agreements between the County of Northampton and CFA to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant.
I believe someone is here from Recovery Resolutions. If any other has any questions for this, is there anybody that does? You can come up, please, and introduce yourself and let us know who you are.
Hi, I'm Jana Mars, the executive director and founder of Recovery Revolution.
Thank you, anybody from council have a question for this?
Yeah, could you tell us what you're gonna do and how you're gonna spend the money?
Sure, absolutely. We have three spaces in our current outpatient treatment center that are basically not well-used. We want to turn them into a place where our clients can get their own resources, so a client space, one for our clinicians for their resources as well, and then another for just storage for things. We also are, the biggest line item actually is a fire escape, so there's-
Oh, that's important.
That's, that's the 43,000, 45,000 of this, is a second-floor fire escape. We currently have a wooden one. We are obviously going to steel, and it's the second-floor egress of our commercial property. The other things on there besides the resource rooms that I spoke about is rear parking lot, we want to seal it, sorry, seal, and there's a whole bunch of problems with the back parking lot that we want to get fixed. And finally, the bathrooms need an upgrade. We just have over about 100 clients coming in and out of the day, and we need to put in commercial toilets, because otherwise we're having all kinds of problems, so.
Well then, TMI.
Right.
How many people are you servicing?
So we have a lot of school students that we reach out to directly in schools, so in the school year, it's about 125 to 135 a week. And then in the summer, we drop down to about 85. We still do telehealth for the students that can, but that's mostly at our place.
Any other questions for this young lady? I thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Moving to the fourth. Call for a vote.
Ms. Rinsky? Yes. Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Is there any other new business? Sheriff Johnson, for a second, can I ask you a question about the man that was here earlier? Not that it's relevant, but I guess we should ask something.
I do have to preface that I'm limited.
Well, only thing I want to know is-
I can't talk specifically about a case.
No, I'm gonna ask the case. Once they're taken possession, we're not responsible for trying to keep it in pristine condition, correct? We just collect it.
No, what we do, yes, but we are issuing an order to retrieve the weapons, that the person is, by court order, has to surrender them. We go to where they're located, provided it's inside the county. We inventory them, we issue an itemized receipt. The firearms are put in sleeves for protection. Plus, we don't want people wondering why the sheriff's bringing in 20 guns-
Gotcha.
-at the government center, so they are protected in a firearm sleeve. They're put into a safe where they're kept. The safe is padded for the handguns, the long rifles stand up. Then, from there, they get re-inventoried, and they get sent into a vault that's climate-controlled.
So once this is done, we're not really responsible if any damage happens, am I right or wrong with that?
We put down the status of a weapon, most of them are good, otherwise, it's like, we don't, we're not appraisers, so we don't go and physically expect it, you know, if you're taking, say, 10 weapons from somebody to, you know, we have other weapons that we have to take that night, so we can't be specific. Nobody in my department would go out of their way to damage somebody's personal property, it just doesn't make sense. We have a tremendous amount of weapons in our vaults. This is the only time that we've had an issue, that I'm aware of, that anybody made any complaint. The gentleman spoke of a thing called E-Trace, which I just found out about today, and the ATF controls that. So we cannot call the ATF and say, somebody would like their weapon back, could you please look it up? The data bank, which is NCIC, National Crime Information Center, does not have the guns registered to anybody. The individual is told, go to a firearms license dealer, register it, you won't have to do this again. He told you that he got seven of his weapons back-
Right.
-because they were registered.
Right.
This one-
Was not.
Right.
Seems like it should have been a simple solution.
Anybody else have any questions?
Sheriff, just, and I looked at the pictures, I mean, I can't speak to his emotional attachment, it looked like a 45 caliber. I mean, the slide action, where the scratches were, going forward, would it be feasible? I'm asking you, if it would be feasible for us, I'm sure you took all the precautions that you have to, you guys have been doing this for a long, long time. Should we be taking maybe a digital photo of the guns we get, and once the thing's passed, we can delete them, I'm just wondering.
I don't think that's possible.
I've never had, heard this issue come up about somebody complaining.
We did have one individual that we took, I think it was 122 guns.
Wow.
And it actually, four deputies had to come in on Saturday to inventory everything. So we have probably 1,000 guns downstairs, so you need pictures on one side, the other side, and this is for one person who's saying something, one person who's unhappy that we're following what the law says.
Fair enough, I just, it was a thought, and you've explained why it probably wouldn't be practical.
And plus, if the gun is 46 years old.
Yeah.
You know, it got scratched here.
I, I, I hear you.
I mean, I mean, everything's possible, but it's highly unlikely.
Why would he have a picture?
We don't wanna, he's right, I mean, it's not a worry.
Oh, the reason he has pictures was he made a complaint, and the lieutenant, who he doesn't think highly of, says, take pictures, send it in to us, and we can take a look at it.
So those were his pictures?
Right, which he felt this was another jumping through a hoop. Like we're saying, show us evidence so that we can look into this, and it's kind of, you know.
But he took those pictures before?
No.
When he had the gun in position, or?
I can't tell you the status of that weapon right now, so you could probably read into what I'm saying.
Yeah. Anybody else got any questions? Only thing I gotta say is-
All right, let's go.
He got himself in trouble, that's the price you gotta pay when you get a PFA, in my opinion. You did an excellent job, and I commend you for it. I thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Good job, Sheriff Johnson. Any other new business? If not, can I have committee reports?
I have one committee report. We had a presentation regarding the Whole Home Program. It's providing funding for the county-wide agencies to address the habitability and workforce development and program implementation of the Whole Home Program. We really had a huge discussion, not really a huge discussion, but a great presentation, and it was, too bad more people couldn't have been here. Northampton Community College was here to tell us about the programming. They gave us this really nice PowerPoint slideshow to talk to us about how they're going to develop at least, what is it, 60, 40 contractors and 20 new workforce employees trained to be of service in this program. Really awesome.
That was 60 hours, right?
60, six weeks or eight weeks of coursework, yeah. And they gave us, and they have a whole budget here, I would encourage everybody to read over the packet, and if they have any questions, you could direct them to the DCED.
Any other committee reports? Counsel liaison reports?
I'm not, I want to give a report on the airport, I'm not the liaison, but since I'm on it, piece of business that counsel probably should be aware of. You may have seen it in the news, maybe not, that the contract was, been prepared between the airport and, I think it's Marriott, and I'm pretty sure it's Marriott Courtyard, it's gonna build a hotel on airport land, authority-owned land. And it was a good discussion, it passed, but the concerns were legitimate. The concerns, I think primarily were, who's responsible for safety issues, police, fire. The airport, the director said that it would, I was a little confused, and I tried to get a hold of him, I couldn't, that it would be the airport, they have their own fire, and they have, you know, an on-site police, but, and a mutual aids. But being in Hanover Township, Lehigh County, I would think that even though it's a not-profit, that Hanover Township Fire Company, if there were an emergency, whether it's on airport land or not, would respond if an alarm went out. In the same vein with police, I know the airport has police, and I know that they have their fire, which, you know, we all know that, but it was just a little, a little bit vague on that. It still passed to go forward and put the contract through, but Mr. Hughes, the chairman, said that for the next meeting, they'd like a full report on the police and fire concerns that were brought up, so. I just wanted to share that information with you.
I know it doesn't affect us, because it's not in our county, but my question is, will they be paying property taxes and hotel taxes comparable to what other competing hotels would?
My short answer is yes, and my long answer is, yes, I believe, your statement is accurate. There certainly was a conversation about a fee that they would pay, that they're paying on top of it with the land that's being leased, you know, being leased. So, again, I will try and get, I'm gonna be talking hopefully with the director, and I'm gonna try and get a report for counsel, if counsel desires it, that's more specific. Like I said, we just had the meeting, and it was, there were questions, there were concerns, but.
I guess the question is, are other hoteliers at a disadvantage?
Well, and that was, that was the thing, it's on the airport, and I think it was a new concept that they would be using the land, it certainly would be convenient for people, but does it put others hoteliers at a disadvantage, that's a good question. The questions seem to be more circulate, more revolving around, what's the responsibilities of the airport authority, once it's on their land? I mean, the idea that their police would, how many guests are in there, they're responsible? What if there's a disturbance in the hotel? So, yeah, I will endeavor to get more information from counsel.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure, anybody else?
Ms. McClure, for a second, would you like to give a report on where we were yesterday? We were at the new Shiloh Building?
Oh, the O-R-L-T-S-R, yes, thank you.
Many letters for me.
Yeah, thank you for representing counsel there, we appreciated your presence as president. Yes, we opened the O-R-L-T-S-R. I think there's some work left to be done, some punch list items to be completed, and then, of course, the folks who are gonna reside there, the residents in this secure facility, and it's secure, will need to be referred there through the due process of the court system. So, it's not like folks are gonna start living there tomorrow. But soon enough, because there's a need.
And they did hire some locals to-
I don't know.
I think that she had said one of her directors was, but.
So yes, we were very honored to be there with representatives from Obensas. Comar, who's going to operate it for us, was there, it was a wonderful event. Of course Pastor Phil, who has been just so important in getting this done, was there as well.
It was good, thank you, sir.
All right.
Okay, clerks report.
Nothing.
Solicitors report?
Nothing.
Motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Second. All those in favor? Half hour.
No, you didn't, no, you didn't, 17 minutes, bro, not yet. Close, no cigar.